Senator Madison, position one.
Larry Vernon, position two.
Becky Campbell, position five.
Becky Campbell, position four.
Oh, all right.
Anthony chimed in, but he's still muted, so you might unmute him.
Yeah, I could see his lips moving, but I couldn't hear. Oh, is Counsel Pogano on?
You heard there, any kids?
There he is, okay. Can you hear us?
I'm here.
All right, good, good. No, that sounded very clear. Okay.
Okay, I'll leave you unmuted, Anthony, and then just mute yourself if you want, okay?
Got it.
And then Carl Pogano, Mayor, and our Administrator, Jody Fritz, is here. And our Public Works Superintendent Will Nudal is here as well. So we're going to go straight into Special Orders of Business. It's the Neighborhood Unquote Introduction Community Development Block Grant. And from what I understand from the Administrator, the reason that we're, and we really are doing nothing else but sponsoring, is that they have a new grant and they need at least three governmental agencies to sponsor that. Is that correct, ma'am?
Participate. They need one sponsor and three participating agencies, entities. And Eric from Neighbor Works Unquote is on the line and can fill us in if you would like that.
Yeah, let's go ahead and let him speak.
Okay, so Eric, take it away.
Sure, so exactly like you said, Jody had put in her statement there that simply your role is the sponsor for the program. The program goes out to the city and then gets administered by us. So we do all of the lake work and you have to sign in a couple places. And people of your city get to get some cleanup work done.
And this is coming directly from that grant, correct?
It is, yeah. It comes from the Oregon Business Development Department.
All right, thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Who is the, hi, this is Becky Campbell. I was wondering who the third agency was? If it's, if the city's going to be the sponsor and Neighbor Works Unquote's going to be the admin, who's the third agency?
Well, we're not actually one of the three. We've reached out to the city of Port Orford and to Curry County. We've also reached out to Brookings and Crescent City because they kind of overlap a little bit. But Curry County, once they sign on it, allows us to work anywhere in Curry County, but we prefer to get the cities involved as well.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions, Counsel? I guess there are no further questions. I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Eric, we're going to move on to the public hearing portion and all that, so if you guys want to hang out in case we do anything wrong, okay?
Okay, thank you.
First, we've got Citizens' Comments. If there is anybody on the line that wants to speak now, this is the time to do it. Okay, then we're going to go on to the public hearing. And we're going to open up the public hearing at 6:35. Administrator, I believe you have something to read into this.
Yes, that's correct. And please bear with me because I have to read the public notice that was published in the paper. I have to read it in its entirety into the record, so hang with me. The city of Gold Beach is eligible to apply for a 2020 Community Development Block Grant from Business Oregon. Community Development Block Grant funds come from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The grants can be used for public facilities and housing improvements, primarily for persons with low and moderate income. Approximately $12 million will be awarded to Oregon non-metropolitan cities and counties in 2020. The maximum grant that a city or county can receive for housing rehabilitation projects is $500,000, including the additional $100,000 for work in manufactured home parts. The city of Gold Beach is preparing an application for a 2020 Community Development Block Grant from Business Oregon for a regional housing rehabilitation program for persons residing in the city of Gold Beach. It is estimated that the proposed project will benefit at least 60 persons, of whom 100% will be low or moderate income. A public hearing will be held by the city of Gold Beach at 6:30 on July 6, 2020, at the City Council Chamber of City Hall located at 29592 Ellensburg Avenue, Gold Beach, Oregon 97444. The purpose of this hearing is for the city of Gold Beach City Councilors to obtain citizen views and to respond to questions and comments about community development and housing needs, especially the needs of low and moderate income persons, as well as other needs in the community that might be assisted with a community development block grant project and the proposed project. Written comments are also welcome and must be received by Monday, July 6, at 5:00 p.m. at 29592 Ellensburg Avenue, Gold Beach. Both oral and written comments will be considered by the city of Gold Beach City Councilors in deciding whether to apply. The location of the hearing is accessible to persons with disabilities. Please contact Jody Fritz, City Administrator, City Hall, 29592 Ellensburg Avenue, if you need any special accommodations to attend or participate. More information about Oregon Community Development Block Grants, the proposed project, and records about the city of Gold Beach's past use of community development block grant funds is available for public review at 29592 Ellensburg Avenue, Gold Beach during regular office hours. Advance notice is requested. If special accommodations are needed, please notify Jody Fritz, City Administrator, same address, so that appropriate assistance can be provided. Permanent involuntary displacement of persons or businesses is not anticipated as a result of the proposed project. If displacement becomes necessary, alternatives will be examined to minimize the displacement and provide required reasonable benefits to those displaced. Any low and moderate income housing that is demolished or converted to another use will be replaced. And that was the notice that was published by Neighbor Works Unquote in the newspaper. So I did not receive any written comments prior to the hearing.
Yeah, I was just about to ask you that, thank you. I know that you had not, as of the time that you, but nothing since then either.
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any public comment on this? Anybody out there? I'm going to close the public hearing at, forgive me.
I'm going to type real quick and say, ask if anyone has any comments.
Yeah. Are you getting anything on there?
I'm asking.
Okay. But I also forgot to, forgive me, Counsel, I forgot to ask you guys if you had any questions concerning this. I mean, after all, you're the ones that decided.
That is Trish. I'm fairly certain because she had texted me.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
I just think it's a great program and I think them for us most.
Yeah, it kind of surprised me a little bit because, like I said, sometime earlier, about 2002, I got us on that Unquote program. And we had already been receiving some, back then, it was just designated for coups in Douglas Counties. But once the repayment came in, it became defederalized, and then they started putting money into Curry County and Gold Beach. So that's part of like the house, you know, on Hillcrest. And there have been a lot of people that have received that. So I was a little bit, I don't know, confused in ways why we had to go through this again until the Administrator pointed out that this dealt with this specific grant. So we had to be on board for that. But Unquote has been helping us for quite some time. Are they a good group? They really are. All right. Anything come in?
No, no comments.
All right, let's go ahead. And we have no further comments from Counsel. We'll close it at 6:40.
And then later in the agenda, there will be a resolution to go along with the application.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. All right, we've got the second reading, ordinance number 670. This is amendment, amending ordinance 645 and 637. And you are a membership. Remember, we decided to go with number two at the time, which allowed for only one person in the city and three others to either be a property ordinance within the city or within the Unified School District. So what say you guys? I think it all it is, is yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance 670 by head alone.
Thank you. Is there a second to that?
One second.
All right. Counsel Madison, seconds. Discussion, question. Aye.
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 Okay, and then I need to read the second reading into the record, so just bear with me a sec. This is the second reading of ordinance number 670 and ordinance amending and replacing portions of ordinance 645 and 637, which created the Gold Beach Urban Renewal Agency. Second reading. This will go into effect 30 days from today.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Okay, Resolution R 2021-02, Budget Committee Appointment. And we did have that gentleman that wanted to get on that. And I understand he, with his addition, would give us a full budget committee.
He still has one vacancy, but we have nine now. So we have the five councilors, and then he will make four lay members. But we do still have one lay member position open.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Okay, I think all that is, is once again, there is a motion on that?
I make the motion to adopt Resolution R 2021-02, a resolution confirming appointments to the Budget Committee and setting terms of office.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
Counsel Brennan, seconds. Discussion, question.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, you announce.
Thank you.
Resolution R 2021-01, Adopting a Fair Housing Policy and Program.
Okay, this is a requirement for the CDBG program. And I didn't write this. It's a sample one that they put together. I just put our name on it.
No motion on that?
I have a question if you don't have.
Oh, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Do we know if an attorney reviewed this?
I'm assuming since it was in the IFA template package that...
They've borrowed our company.
I mean, I would assume because the state is distributing it that it would have been.
I just know Fair Housing is very touchy.
Well, like you said, I got it from the state, so I'm assuming they got it. I mean, that was their template.
Anything further?
Yeah, I just think.
Did that satisfy your question?
Well, if they have an answer, I'll take theirs if they have.
Yes, sir. What was the question? What's?
I wanted to know if our attorney, if an attorney had reviewed it.
Do we have an answer for that?
We're waiting to see if they, because she took it off their template.
I'm assuming because it came from the state of Oregon that, I'm assuming so because it's from the state. I mean, it's not from Neighbor Works Unquote, it came from IFA.
Came from IFA, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution R 2021-01. Want to ask our attorney to review it.
Motion has been made. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Counsel Brennan, seconds. Discussion, question.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, you announce. Now, we've got the Resolution R 2021-03, Food Card Mobile, Food Vendor Moratorium on Ellensburg Avenue, if I'm not mistaken, and whatever we can...
Okay, now, I just took a wild stab at this, so Counsel Kaufman, make sure that I didn't add more than you wanted or didn't put in less than you wanted.
So we talked about putting a moratorium on food carts on 101. And I talked to Jody and I said, you know, that's a pretty weak way to do it, just in a council meeting. So we thought if we put it into a resolution, it would make more sense. And then Counsel Madison asked a question, and I didn't know that it wasn't very clear. So hopefully, this is clearer and it's what we really want.
And we're actually, what now? Waiting until September to make a final decision on that? I mean...
Well, I put in there that the Counsel wanted to address it as soon as possible and that the, that staff would have a potential code amendment to you by September. Because I didn't figure I could be able to get it to you by August. Because we'll come up with the code amendment, have the attorney review it, and then we should have it by the, Counsel Madison, when is the September meeting? I can't see that far.
Oh, I can't either.
It is the seventh.
Okay, so we should be able to have a draft ordinance, I mean, a draft, it would be an ordinance amendment. Yeah, a draft ordinance by the seventh of September.
Good, thank you.
And Anthony has already, Anthony Planning Tech has already gotten me some codes from other cities so we can kind of compare them.
So the resolution that we're looking at tonight is fundamentally, are we making a resolution to have this, like, better than what we're thinking of, by September?
Yeah, just if somebody were to walk in the door tomorrow, we would say that we're not, we're not going to issue any new ones. The ones that are there now can stay.
By authority of a resolution.
Yep. But by September, we will hopefully have something in place to kind of have, as Will always says, guardrails on it. Because right now, there's not a lot that they have to do.
Yep. All right, thank you. Counsel, do you have anything further on that? Would anybody care to make a resolution? Yes, sir.
I move to food, Resolution R 2021-03, Resolution declaring temporary moratorium on issuing new business licenses and planning and public work authorization to operate food cart mobile, food vendor business within the Ellensburg Avenue.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there a second to that?
One second.
There you go.
Counsel Kaufman, seconds. Discussion, question.
Aye. Nay.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to two.
And this is just for 101? So like, if somebody were to come in to be down at the fork, we would just process it?
All right. All right, we move on to Resolution R 2021-04. This is county land request. And what I understand with that, this is a pretty common policy. It allows a county to go ahead and, under the park ruling, to sell land. Land that they have surplus land and land that they don't need anymore. Is that correct, Administrator?
Yes, and I, the county Director of Operations had sent over a resolution template. I forwarded that to our attorney for their review. They made some changes to it, and then he reformatted it for our format.
Oh, thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions concerning this? Have a resolution in place?
I make a motion to approve Resolution R 2021-04.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
One second.
Was that a second?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Pogano, seconds. Discussion, question.
I have, I have...
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
I'd like to recuse myself from the vote on this, may I?
Fine, thank you for bringing that up. Is there any other discussion?
Do you have a conflict of interest or... Pretty much.
Okay, yeah. If you feel, yeah, if you feel that you would run into any problems with that, regardless of the reason, you did the right thing, so that's good. Question.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Whoops, I'm not...
I didn't call it back.
Motion passes court enough with one abstention. All right. Now we have requests from LOC, municipal legislative priorities for 2021. You all, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Did I miss a resolution about the Budget Committee appointment?
That was the second one, I believe. And you voted yes.
Yeah, wow. Okay, no, I think you, you know, I got your standing if you were.
Okay, so this is a pretty long list. It's A to Z, obviously. So the reason why I sent it ahead was that so that you would all have the opportunity to look it over. We are supposed to send them the top four. And the last time we did this, what I did was I kind of told you all on what your, what each of you were, and then I took the one that had the most four, and that's what we sent. So does that work for you, or do you want to talk about each one?
You know, that probably would work if we, everybody came up with their own list, and then next month, I believe that's what we're looking at.
No, we have to send it back to them prior to that. That's why I put it in the pocket right now, so that you have time to look at it.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was under the impression that we were just supposed to take time to think about it and have the time to think about it. Well, Counsel, what do you think? You want to go ahead and just put it up on the board and let the Administrator just, basically what we'd be doing is handing down the basic four.
This is what I expected. Yeah, this is great. So just, just put your, and there's no wrong answer because they're all important. And then I'll just tabulate them, and whichever of the top four ones are the ones that are four.
Okay. Do you want me to write everybody's down, or do you want me to just write mine down?
Just, you go ahead and just, well, you're there, so...
Write yours down first, and then just go around the board.
Yeah. Do the, the letter.
I don't have the letters, ma'am.
Okay, here.
I just wrote down what I wanted. The mental health is Q. The mental health is Q? Okay.
Q, yeah, Q is mental health. What's the next one?
My next one is broadband infrastructure and tech assembly.
B.
B as a boy? Yes. Okay. COVID-19 economic recovery loans.
F, D as in David.
And housing and services.
Housing and services is H. Nice in housing.
Okay, we're just gonna, we're gonna start with you.
Easy, easy. Mine is B, first one.
I'm writing names, you're doing numbers.
Yes, ma'am. What did you say?
B. D. J. And U.
Counsel Pogano?
D.
D as in David?
D as in David, yeah.
Okay.
And O.
Counsel Kaufman?
Q. Q. T.
Who was the Counsel Madison?
Yep. B. F. N. Okay, so it looks like maybe Q is the next one. We got U, B, D.
Looks like B, D.
Yeah, so the next one's two Qs, right? Three? Oh, three Ts, okay, so we got it.
Another, there are four. Two Ds.
Yeah, I got that.
Oh, okay, three Ds.
J was only one. O was only one. T, V. Okay, yeah, so there we got them. So we got broadband, infrastructure, COVID-19, economic recovery, property tax reform, and mental health service delivery. And I'm happy to report that I chose all of those as well. Okay, right on, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Ooh, we got that in care.
Okay, you guys did give them a mark.
I put the marker by the... Anthony almost got 100%.
Okay.
Oh, so did Mary.
Well, everything that I've seen, this next item has been pretty much taken care of, Administrator, and that is a material road dangerous building update. I know that Counsel Brennan complied today, and it was cleared off.
Yes.
So that's good news.
The, I would like to report that Counselor Kaufman's $100 a day got the attention of the parking lot.
I imagine that just like, kudos to you.
So it's all cleaned up, and he has applied for his manufactured home permit. I don't know if it finished you, but he has applied for it. So definitely better. And the gentleman that had come to a couple of the meetings wanted to, wanted me to express to you his thanks for getting the situation taken care of.
All right, thank you. So as far as I know, then he is complying with everything that we initially had him do, and there is no further need now to...
Correct.
Okay, so this is a done deal now?
The door's now closed, thankfully.
Amen to that.
Yep, and it's went on plenty long enough.
Yeah, no, that's good to hear. All right, and Administrator, you've got a 2020 election reminder.
Okay, and that's just, you know, I'll remind you again next month. The filings close on August 25. If you or friends of yours intend to file my signature, I like to tell people, get it in here a week ahead of time just to give the courts office time to verify the signatures. But you can always just pay the filing fee of $50, and then it's done, so.
August 26?
25.
25.
25. And then I also included a copy of, just because it's a good info from LOC, so you want to run for local office. They've had that booklet for many, many years, and they just updated it this year. I used to just make copies of the old one, but they updated it this year. And I just included it because it's just, it's just some really good information. But we hand that out, if, when folks come in to get their candidate packet, we give them a copy of that booklet as well.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
We're just zipping through this meeting, woo-hoo.
Yeah, we are, and we've come now to your report.
Okay, and...
Yes, ma'am.
To be casual, we need two for the CDBG? Or we just need a public hearing?
Oh, we just need the public hearing, and then we had to adopt the fair housing thing.
Oh, that's it, okay.
Yeah. We may have one other thing that can come later. It's a leap, it's language, something like if you... You know what I'm talking about, right? Okay. I'm not expressing myself well. It's like, if you need help with language assistance, if English isn't your native language. And I reached out to CCD, and they sent me a couple of sample LEAP policies. But we may not have to, because of the, they look at what the census date is on how many non-English speaking people we have per the census. And if it's below a certain percentage, we don't have to adopt one. We just have to say that if they need assistance, we will provide it, so. But yeah, that's all that we have to do. So, I didn't, I don't have a, I don't have a CM report, because you guys kind of know what's been going on in my life lately. One thing that I did want to report, which is super good news, you may or may not know that the CARES Act, the money that came from the feds that went down to individual businesses, it also could go to the state, but for whatever reason, federal law prohibits it from going to local government. So, so county and city governments are not eligible for that money. Well, thankfully, the state of Oregon was gracious enough to say that we're going to pass through some of our money down to the local governments, which they certainly didn't have to do that, it wasn't anything the feds required. But, so the city, we put in to get reimbursed for expenses that we had so far that were not budgeted directly related to the COVID crisis, and we got $19,000. So, and that is, that will be through the end of this calendar year. There are structural changes that I had to make to the interior of the visitor center in order to comply with new health standards. So I anticipate that the cost of that, because it was unbudgeted, that we will also be able to submit for that. And it was actually a relatively painless process, which was good. Because usually if it's federal money involved, it's a lot more painful, but it wasn't. So I was really thrilled that we got the money, and it is actually already in the bank. We got it last week, so. So that's the only bit of good news in the last several months.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is the visitor center open yet?
Nope.
Do you have an ETA?
Nope. Until, until we have, and the same with City Hall, until there's a downward trajectory in cases in Oregon, and especially California, because they're so close to us, that we will not... And that is a risk management issue, we just, you can't.
Are they answering the phone or anything, or they're just all in front of us?
Uh, mostly website, yeah.
You know, what you brought up just reminded me of something, and I'm glad that Will is here. That $100,000 from ODA, we were planning to go ahead and get that sidewalk, I think, around there, constructed pretty much, I think, during this time. How is that looking right now?
It's looking pretty good. We are short on two properties where our right-of-way is strained. And so Jody's got the documents, and we're going to contact the property owners and expand the right-of-way there, and that's all that we're really lacking on our side. And engineering-wise, it's literally nothing, because we're just replacing what's existing, but we are adding some sidewalks up by the school that have never existed, and some drainage, so. It's pretty much slammed up to get it out to bid, once we get the property all cleaned up.
Did you have any problem now, are we doing the work ourselves, or are we contracted?
No, this will be contracted, and this will also involve asphalt overlay. We're going to head through coal iron and LEAP intersection, all the way down past Monville Power Substation in there, because the asphalt's starting to unravel, so it's kind of a general length. We'll go as far as we can, if we can add to this project if the bids come in low, or if we have a little bit of our asphalt laying off to the side that we can use towards this. I'd like to keep it going down Sixth Street, because that's one of the most heavily traveled chunks of road that we own, so.
Oh, good, thank you. So it looks as if it's going to go according to schedule in spite of the COVID thing?
Yes, we did put it off a little bit. The engineers got busy when COVID showed up and things got all messed up as, as far as staff time being able to go towards that, so they probably put it off about a month and a half. But we'll still strike this year, I think we can hit the target before, you know, the rain flies in November. It might be when schools are in session, but it looks like schools are going to be distance learning this year, so. May not interrupt any of the schoolchildren and the traffic to the school very late.
All right, thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Administrator, does you have anything else, ma'am?
No, like I said, this month has been...
I know it's been tough for you.
Yep.
All right. Counsel Madison, do you have anything?
No, I don't, thank you.
Counsel Brennan?
Nothing.
Counsel Pagano?
I have nothing.
I think, Counsel Campbell?
Nothing, sir.
Counsel Kaufman?
There's a lot of things I can say, but I won't. I appreciate working with everybody, I think we have a good team.
I think we have a good team, too. And, but I did want to say something to Counsel Madison. And I hope you forgive me, the, and I'm going to give you the reasoning for it as well. I did write a letter to ODA. I did more than that. I phoned Kim Britt personally, and we had a nice, long chat. And that turned out very nicely, it really did. Because as I've mentioned before, I've had nothing but respect for her and the people there. The reason I said no at that time was because I'd already intended to, and I wanted to make sure that they knew that it came from my heart, not because somebody tried to get me to do it. And I kind of balk at that type of thing. But the point is, and I hope you forgive me, that I was a little, little short with you, I'm sorry. But it was taking place, it did take place. Got it going. The other letter did get on, thanks to Administrator, was posted on Facebook. I do not read internet, whether it go social, networking, or whatever it is, you know, on the internet. I just never have, I didn't even know I had a Facebook page until my wife found it. So really, I'm kind of an electronic book, and which, I still use the name. But at any rate, it, from what I gather, the responses to that have been, for the most part, pretty good. But more than anything, I wanted to, and I didn't do it the last time that I can remember, so I want to do it now, to make sure that I did. I want to apologize for putting the counsel through what the counsel was putting. And once again, that was never my intention. But I just want you to know that I am sorry that I drug you into this. And I can't, you know, it's unfortunate, but... Now you know what a flawed human being looks like. At any rate, I think that's about it. I do want to thank you all for hanging in there. And as Counsel Kaufman mentioned, I think that we have, and always have, a very good working team. And I appreciate each and every one of you. So with that in mind, I'm going to shut up, because we're going to get out of here pretty early this week. And so if there are any, any, any comments by anybody on the air there, that if they would like to speak now, this is the time to do it. Counsel, no, Superintendent Nudel, lest I forget, you've been sitting here patiently the entire time, sir. Was there anything that you wanted to address the counsel with?
No, just support.
All right, thanks. Okay, I'm assuming we have nobody online? All right. The next scheduled, regularly scheduled city council meeting is the, on Monday, August 3rd, 2020, at 6:30 PM. We'll be right here. And the council will meet as the Gold Beach Budget Committee on Wednesday, July 15th, at 5:00 PM. I will not be able to be here on the 15th. I have a VA hospital appointment in Medford. So I will not be able to be here. At any rate. So we've got that.
Counsel Pagano said cheers to Chief Krieger on a great fourth.
He said what, ma'am?
Cheers to Chief Krieger on a great fourth.
Oh.
Fireworks.
Oh.
I heard a lot of positive comments about the fireworks, that they were outstanding this year.
No, they really did, they did a terrific job. And it was nice of them to go ahead and behold it. Because Cruz Bay canceled theirs, Bannon had canceled it, and then I think they reinstated it. Brookings canceled theirs, Port Oraque canceled theirs. So we were pretty much the only game in town. And from what I understand, I watched it from the porch as much as I could, but it was really good, and people really, really seemed to enjoy it. So that was, once again, kudos to the people that put that on, and our volunteer fire department, and everybody. Counsel, unless you've got anything else to say, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
That was quick. I'm not going to ask for discussion, question.
Aye.
Aye!
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, meeting adjourned.
All right, thank you so much, everyone.
And, yes, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
It was a good meeting, we got through that right nicely.